I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I were at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
Happy evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 13 Board of Selectment Meeting. And we'll start by a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we're on that. I don't believe there's any announcements tonight, but I just wanted to say a couple of words about, on Saturday, we went to Junior High School for Pet Day event down there. It was very well attended. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we appreciate our vets very much. Because, you know, every year, they take one kid from each one of the elementary schools, and they talk about what they think of that kid as. It was pretty interesting. It was a good day. Thanks to the vets. So we do have a public hearing ready at 7:00 here. It's the Board of Assessors for FY '18 Tax Classification here. Good evening.
Good evening. Call set for them?
Lots of assessors here.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. That time of year, again, already, we're here for classification. With me is the Board of Assessors. We've got the Chairman of the Board, Mary Quill, and Board members Libby Bates and Elaine Boarding. And we also have our Assistant Assessor, Jean Jalali, here tonight. I'll tell you quickly, I've been out on a medical leave the past few weeks. Have to be back and be healing well. But in my absence, the Assistant Assessor had to take over the operations of the office. And she did an outstanding job. I'm very thankful to have her. My board is appreciative of all her work. And because this is my first day back, she actually prepared the presentation. So what we're going to do tonight is Jeanie's going to come up and give the majority of the presentation. I'll come back up just at the end and go over one item, and then we're going to open it up to you guys for questions. So why don't we just get right into it? Jeanie, and you can come on up.
Hi, everybody. So right now, obviously, we're here for the tax classification here. And this is where the Board of Selectmen votes on whether or not to have a uniform which is a single rate or a split tax rate. So the fiscal year '18 estimated tax levy, and that's the amount raised through property taxes, is estimated to be approximately $40 million. And this is approximately 60% of the town's entire budget. The total valuation of the town is close to $2.7 billion. Now, that gives us an estimated tax rate of $1489 per thousand. Now, again, tonight, you're not voting on the tax rate. You're only voting on whether or not to have a split or a uniform rate. Now, fiscal year '18 values are done by class, and that is by use. Residential have a value of about $2.3 billion. Commercial has a value of $232 million. Industrial, close to $86 million. Personal property, close to $38 million. And that gives you the total of the $2.7 billion in value. Now, this shows you what the percentage is for each class. As you can see, residential, obviously, is the highest amount of, close to 87% of the value of the town, followed by commercial at 8.6, industrial at 3.2, and then personal property is a little better than 1% of the total value of the town. This is the community comparison for fiscal year '17, which is the last year. It has the majority of the Plymouth County towns in it. These are only single-rate towns. They don't have any of the split tax rates up there. But it gives you the average single-family tax bill for last year. And as you can see, Wareham is the cheapest place to live, at a little under $2,800. And the Luxbury is at a little under $10,000 in the average single-family tax bill. Pembroke is number nine, showing that they're in the lower half of the average tax bill for the town. The average fiscal year '18 assessment for residential, single-family is a little better than $373,000. Using the anticipated tax rate of $1489, that gives the residential average tax bill $5564. Now, the average commercial property assessment is a little more than $1 million, giving the average commercial tax bill, again, using that estimated tax rate of $1489, of $15,418 per year. This is an overview of the past couple of years and the values, valuations in the taxes and what have happened. Now, as anyone knows, and what's going on with the real estate market right now, values are definitely on the upside, as you can see from looking at this. In 2016, the average single-family was valued at about $345. It jumped up in '17 to $359. And then '18, our average tax bill and our average single-family value is about $373,000. Now, as you can see from the bottom, they have the tax amount, the change in the amount of taxes from year to year. Between '17 and '18, we're looking at the tax bill of the average family, the increase approximately $144. Between '16 and '17, the increase was about the same, at $146. And then between '15 and '16, it was $359. That little higher jump is due to the proposition two-and-a-half override that was done from the schools. So a split tax rate. If your average, if your taxes, your assessment right now is $100,000, and using the anticipated tax rate of $1489, you're going to be paying $1,489 in taxes. If you had a $1 million property, you're going to pay $14,890. That would be uniform tax rate. If you split the tax rate, it shifts the burden from the residential to the commercial, industrial, and personal property class. This is, just gives you an overview as if you have, if you have a percentage between 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50% shift from residential to commercial. It's a little easier to see on this slideshow. It gives you an easy breakdown to look at. So if you had a 10% shift, in order for the average residential, single-family taxpayer to save $85 per year, the average commercial taxpayer would bear the additional burden of $1,542 per year. Now, if you had a 50% shift, the average residential, single-family taxpayer could save $426, the average commercial taxpayer would bear the additional burden of more than $7,700 per year. So it's because of these reasons and others that the Board of Assessors has voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a single, uniform tax rate. And now I'm going to have Kathy Salmon come up, and she is going to discuss the small commercial exemption possibility.
Okay. So the last item to consider is this small commercial exemption. There is a provision in the law that says if the selectmen so choose, they can vote to have two different rates for commercial. Who qualifies for a small commercial exemption? There are a lot of rules, which have to be a sole proprietor or partnership. You can have no more than 10 employees. The property and where your business is can't exceed an assessment of $1 million. And the Department of Labor and Workforce actually puts out the list of who they say qualifies. The benefit, or the intended benefit, was to say, well, we're going to take these small businesses and let them pay something a little bit less, and whatever savings they have, we're going to shift on to the bigger businesses. That was the intent. But the things to consider are that, in practice, it's very difficult to track. One of the things that happens in commercial property, many times, the small businesses don't own the real estate. So the savings go to the owner of the building, which doesn't necessarily then translate to the small businesses that happen to be tenants in that building. The other problem is, is many times, you have small businesses in both properties that are under the $1 million, and in larger properties that are, might be in a $5 million property. They just happen to be located as a small tenant within that. So there would be no way to be sure that if you're shifting it, that all of the small businesses are really benefiting from that. And in fact, there's no way to avoid shifting on to some of these small businesses that are in some of these larger complexes. So we have, year after year, looked at this, and very few communities have actually adopted it. Again, it was a good idea, but in practice, it's just difficult to get that benefit down to the small businesses that it was intended to go to. So the Board made a vote prior to this meeting to recommend to you that you vote no on the small commercial exemption. So at this point, I'll take any questions that you have, and then we're going to need two votes from you. First, do you want to go with the single or split tax rate? And second, yes or no on the small commercial exemption? And then finally, I would just ask that we keep this hearing open until we hear back from the Department of Revenue. When we get final word from them, then I notify you that the hearing can be formally closed. So I will take any questions or comments that anybody has.
Okay. Thank you. So Kathy, I think the Board understands, we've seen this year in and year out, on the tax split rate, classification, and the small commercial exemption. But why are here? Can you just, for the public's benefit, explain how each residential property is assessed? Explain the process? Because folks don't get a chance to hear from you that often.
Sure. So every year, we value property according to the market. And so I'll keep it really brief, but, you know, we get all of the sales. We get every deed from the registry of deeds that takes place in a year. We analyze those deeds to make sure we're looking at, you know, good market sales, not, you know, somebody to their uncle or discounted sales. But we get a good group of sales, and then we value them according to market. Now, one thing you have to remember is, we are always looking backwards. So the values that we're talking about, that Jeanie was telling you, our total value is $2.7 billion. This is for fiscal '18. So the bills that come out in January are going to have a value on them. That value is actually based on the 2016 sales. So sometimes people think, you know, the assessments are always lower than what I could really get in the market. We do value it 100% of market. It's just dated. So by the time your bill comes out for fiscal '18, that will be January of 2018. That bill that you get in January of 2018 is based on the '16 sales. So there is always this lag. And when the market is increasing, you're going to think your assessment's a little bit lower, or sometimes a lot lower than what the market is. And the reverse is true. Sometimes, when the market's decreasing, your assessment could be higher than what it is worth currently. So that's kind of one of the big differences. But each and every year, we go out, we're always inspecting properties. We have to re-inspect over a period of years. So we're always out collecting the data on the property to make sure that what we're basing your assessment on is accurate. And at the same time, we're measuring the market to say, what's happening? Is it going up? Is it going down? Certain segments changing to a certain degree? So that's a quick review of how we do it. But we do change them each and every year.
Bill? I just would like to thank Dan for that question, because I think that's very important for the people at home to understand, including myself, how all that works. And I was a little fuzzy on that, but you have cleared that up tonight, and I'm sure other people at home are going to feel the same way. Because we all look at how our homes are assessed, and we probably don't always agree that we would sell our house for that amount. We would always think it's worth more.
Yes.
Now, we can understand that maybe we're not wrong.
That's correct. So our assessment could be right, and at the same time, you could be right, that you could get something more for your house. Both those things are often happening at the same time.
And I also think that, again, this year, the assessors and yourself have explained what our choices are. We've always had a lot of questions about the single rate, the commercial rate. But again, you've outlined them all again. And I think we're all familiar with it. And I, myself, would think that we should go with your recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I have the same question as Dan.
Okay. So you're set. All right?
Sorry. Step back.
If we're ready, I would move the recommendation that the Board of Assessors would adopt a single tax rate.
Second. That's not open for discussion, and I would also agree with that, is I can't see punishing the businesses where there's more residential than around business. It just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
It makes sense as far as the small commercial also, so I'm also ready for the...
All right.
Bill, just a little further. And again, we speak of this every year. But the question I get from some folks is, oh, please help the residents with their tax bill. And this is one way to do that, one possible way. But it's important for the folks at home to know that, as you explain in your, to highlight what you explained in your PowerPoint presentation, Jean and Kathy, is that to gain a very small amount for the residents, it's a tremendous burden to the commercial properties. So that's clear to us. And I just want people to think that we're taking this vote quickly and lightly. We study this, we know this every year. But that is the case. We can't help the residents in this town. We just don't have enough commercial property to make it a good enough benefit to do so.
And one of the points that sometimes has come up over the years is, it's important to remember, what is the residential? We think of it as the homeowners that are looking for relief, but this is all use. So if you were to split it, we have, you know, an approximate $40 million apartment complex. You might think of that as a business property, but that's actually residential, because it's all according to use. So in a town where you split the rate, that actually would receive discounts. And so commercials of all different sizes would be making up for that. So that's just one to think about on the residential, because it isn't always just the single families that, of course, they're our biggest group. But the other thing that we have to consider within Pembroke is, we have a lot of chapter properties. These are properties that are either in forestry, open space, farmland. And under the master of laws, when you split a rate, they're considered commercial. So they actually would be paying at the higher rate. So it isn't just, you know, the strip mall and the single-family house. It's even beyond that. The majority reason is, is what you just said, Dan. It is that we have so many more residential. But it's also the makeup of our property. You do have to consider all of those things. And kind of for all of those reasons, it continues to not make sense for the town.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And who do you vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the recommendation of the Board of Assessors and not adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second. Any questions or comments? For you, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And who do you vote?
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
So you need a motion to keep this open?
Oh, yeah. I don't know if you can motion it, or I'm not sure how that works. No? Okay. We'll just keep it open, and we'll notify you when we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The gentleman's very nice presentation, and it just explained a lot of this.
Very good. Thank you.
Almost right on the mark here. We've got another minute to go, but I guess we could probably take that minute earlier. Andrew Sullivan is here to request to reconstruct the community center task force and appoint some members. Mr. Sullivan?
I'll be going by that clock, Billy. It's 21 past, so. How do you guys do tonight? Good to see you all. Yeah, how's this work? Right on.
I think if you would just tell us a little bit about what you want to do, and how you can do it, or whatever.
Okay. I'm terrible with dates. Sabrina, maybe help me. When did I first come before you guys to request the committee? Might have been, it was less than a year ago. But any event, some time back, I approached you all to inquire about the community center. Just kind of, you know, I'm just getting back, involved in some town activities. I've had a child playing hoops at the community center, and I got to spend some time there. Of course, growing up in the town, I remember the community center well. So it just, you know, I'm not saying it as an outsider's point of view, but as someone who hadn't really been focusing too closely on the goings-on in the town, I just looked around, and I thought the building, I was really kind of shocked to see the state of the building. And after doing some inquiry, I learned there was several committees from years past. There was a large committee some eight years ago, 25-member committee. And you folks were nice to open up the books to me, to see all the notes from those previous committees Sabrina shared with me. And, you know, we had talked about, you had given me the latitude to go out and look for committee members, to start a study group, to readdress the community center, and look at past committees' work, and maybe take a fresh look at it. So, you know, we haven't had a committee forum officially yet, but that's what I'm here for tonight. We just have four members we're looking to put on the committee tonight, including myself. But I have been unofficially talking to a lot of folks that have participated in the committee from before, and met with some consultants and what have you, to look at the 30-acre property, look at the building a little closer. And so we're just starting to, just starting to review the work that had been done to date, to see what might be relevant from eight years back. And, but at this point, I think we're ready to, you know, go official. Hopefully, you'll grant us these new committee members that are Pembroke residents that were very active in the committee before. I certainly hope we can leave it open for more committee members, for real solid individuals, I think, to start it off. But I, there's some areas, I think, that are key to this project that are not addressed by our committee members today, that I'm still kind of looking for filling in some gaps, for some, you know, grant writing, for instance. You know, really, it would be helpful to find someone in the town that has some experience with that. I think there's some opportunities with this project through grants. And as we all know, it comes down to the financing, and that's the biggest challenge. We can dream of a wonderful new building there, but at the end of the day, we have to pay for it. So that's, that will obviously be one of the more challenging points of the project, is to address the financing side of it. So we can come, we can dream up a wonderful community center, but it has to be paid for at the end of the day. So anyway, I'm excited about the project. You know, it's, to me, it's just this amazing resource in the middle of our town. It's 30 acres, and no area town has such a large tract of land in the middle of their town that has such great potential. And it's really in a sad state today. And I think all the townspeople are pretty much in agreement that the building has outlived its life cycle, and it's, it needs to be addressed. And hopefully, we can, we can come back to you with some interesting ideas for what can happen there. So first step is, I guess, going official with the committee with you, and getting these committee members sworn in with me, and really rolling up our sleeves. We really look forward to getting input from townsfolk on their thoughts on it, and sharing with them some of the new, fresh ideas that we have as well. So that's where we're at. The four committee members we're looking to add are Ralph Capola, Dan Trubuco, Mike Gamaris, and myself.
We have Tony Marino on this, too. Steve Mike.
He is currently a resident in Pembroke.
Oh, okay. And he just took a new job, too, so he's a little busy.
He'll, sure, he will donate his time, but the appointment will be problematic.
We should take a motion, Mr. Chairman? Move to reorganize the inactive community task force with following five members: Andrew Sullivan, Dan Trubuco, Ralph Capola, and Michael Gamaris. Pause for a minute, okay? Someone has another name to add here? If not, the... Was there one on Andrew, I think Marino?
He's not a resident.
He's not a resident.
Well, he's not a resident. He's a building assistant. And he just took a job as town manager. He's the town manager, and he's a little busy. So I think those are the names, unless...
So I'm a little near to this, but I guess with being an official town committee, we'll, there's reporting methods, and I've got that booklet on, I'm sure you can help walk me through it, Dan. But, you know, we schedule meetings, we post it, and everybody's finding meeting space here, or wherever.
Yeah, sure. So this is how it works, Andrew, is Warner's chairman, and let's, part of my motion will be to make Andrew chairman. Sorry. We took a minute. Hopefully, it's seconded. Hope you don't mind, Andrew. So we sent an agenda to Sabrina three days prior to the meeting. So generally, the meetings are, Mondays are obviously picking up, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever's best for the votes. And then the minutes are taken. The chairman does not have to take the minutes. Someone in the committee can take the minutes. Simple is taking notes, but those have to be written and voted on by the committee at a subsequent meeting, and submitted to the town. So I'll walk you through those questions, okay?
Okay. Awesome. Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
The task is easy enough, it's just getting someone to do it. This is the hard part, especially for the minutes.
Right.
And then part of that is, and we haven't taken the vote yet, I know, Bill, but there's also, Andrew, a call for a capital funding study committee, that someone, and I expect you from this committee would want to be a part of that, because all the stuff you mentioned a moment ago about funding for this project is integral to whatever that committee does. So this capital funding study committee, you certainly want to be a part of that, and listen in and participate.
Okay.
So more work. Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah. Okay. We'll keep you posted on that, but look forward to participating in that as well.
So we do have a motion in a second. And there's amendment. We'll do a little bit of a change on that to add Andrew Sullivan as chairman.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And who do you vote?
May I have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
You've gone over the two previous studies on that property.
Pretty much the last one of eight years ago. I've done, I didn't find too many notes on the one prior to that.
Okay. Well, the point is that the Board is very familiar with the studies that were done on that building. And I was just wondering what your opinion was on it. It was either a couple of choices. One is to rehab the entire building, making it into another type of a building, but using the structure that's there now. And the other one was to tear it down and start new. So are you basically in agreement that we would be starting new, or that we could do something with that building?
I, you know, the numbers that were presented to me from eight years back at a cost analysis, and the complete tear-down of it was less... and the, the complete tear-down of it was less than the remodel of it, was the bottom line. I mean, there were some pretty good numbers gathered, you know, but there's asbestos remediation, you know, that, I'm still waiting to, I'm trying to find the actual survey that was done. That was, came in at $325,000 for asbestos remediation, and it was, that was more than the demolition of the structure. But from everything I've seen, the facts would state, you know, that it was cost prohibitive to rebuild the structure eight years ago, and that would only be more true today.
So as you see, where your committee is going to go is to use the premise that we would demolish that particular building. This would be a general plan, and we would end up building another building of some type based on the use of that building. Is that where you're going to go?
I would say that would be the direction, yes, most likely. I really don't think much effort would need, is needs to be spent on considering rehabbing after all the work that was done eight years ago. So, you know, I'm a history buff, I'm, you know, I live in a house built in 1715, and, you know, I love the history of Pembroke, and I love the historic nature of it. So I do appreciate that there's some historic qualities to that school. It was built as a school in 1932, and, you know, there's a definitive look to downtown Pembroke that I'm, I've probably fallen into the historic camp on. So any new structure, and Ralph Capola, who's been quite involved with this, has a lot of thoughts on this as well, the aesthetics of a new structure should really embrace the historic values of the town. So, you know, the more I look around the properties, too, I think they did a wonderful job with the library. I think the, the exterior of the new library out back is, is a really nice asset for the town, and I think whatever we consider for the community center would embrace that. And really, they're kind of sister functions in my mind, that libraries today are very multi-purpose facilities. It's not, you know, they're kind of serving the purposes of a community center in their own way. So, you know, these would be sister operations, and they could look alike. I remember you mentioned it, Arthur, you know, a tie-in to the library, I mean, you know, how they could potentially be connected. I don't think that was really investigated much some eight years back.
No, it wasn't, but to put it in the architectural lines with the building, I think you're right on track.
You know, the thing with the library is funny, I mean, it's such a beautiful building. You really don't see it from the street. It's pretty concealed out front, and you catch glimpses of it, but, you know, when it does open up, I mean, the, the front, you know, front part of that library is very impressive. And, you know, there's, it's, the sightlines, the whole site, you really got to look at the other adjacent properties and how this could all tie in, and lots to think about. And we're really just at the surface here, and I look forward to getting a lot of input from a lot of people, and I really think it's, you know, it's going to, it's going to take a few years, but long-term, I really think, you know, we have to do something about the building anyway. It's in bad, bad shape, and I don't think anyone wants to drive by a condemned building in the middle of our town. So, you know, we have to face the elephant in the room here a little bit, in that this structure is in, in disrepair, and hopefully, we can get creative about it and figure out some funding sources and some partnerships that can now make this happen. And, you know, it really can have a wonderful campus feel to it. I was talking to Debbie Wall of, in the library, and some years before the eight-year committee, there was talk of a campus feel, you know, we have town buildings all in the same area, and it's all, it's all part of one campus, really. You think of a university campus and how all the buildings fit together, and that's a really interesting thought process to consider for our whole downtown area beyond the new town.
So I was discussing with Andrew a couple of weeks ago, some of his initial conceptual ideas. And part of, some of his ideas included building community center, a new community center building, but also fitting into that building the uses that are already existing in a couple of buildings that are up front. The building that the elderly folks use, and the, the boys' club building. And if we could take those buildings that are on the street with public access on the street, as long as the uses that are included there now are in the newer building, lease those buildings out, and those spaces out to commercial businesses as a way to supplement the funding for, for the building itself. So that'll have a dual purpose, right, Andrew? That those historic buildings that are out front on the, on the street will remain as the structures they are, but the use will change to a business, and we make Pembroke more vibrant with street presence businesses. And also, as part of his conceptual project, look at the project, included housing in the back alongside, you know, the housing that's behind the, the post office area? Down in what's the ball field now include housing in that area. So it's a, it's a mix of residential, community center, and businesses now using the buildings that are in front. So Andrew is before us now to start the committee, but he's been doing a lot of work in the last 12 months or so that he's been looking into, not even 12 months. So he, he has some good ideas. The folks that he's already been talking with have some good ideas. Presenting the plan and getting the funding for it is the next steps.
Thank you, Dan. That's it?
That's it. We're all set.
All right. We'll report back soon, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
The agenda was the advisory committee, and we're going to talk a little pension viability analysis, and community comp in for the five to 10-year plans.